Welcome the Honorable Minister to this very meeting with the people of Bouare area council. So we are saying thank you. Indeed, we are highly grateful to the two leaders of Federal Capital Territory, made by the Honorable Minister of Federal Capital Territory and her Excellency the Minister of State, Federal Capital Territory. We want to thank God for the experience we have had at this time. The challenges of insecurity in Bouare despite that the Honorable Minister of Area Council, of Federal Capital Territory today see the need that he must be here whether we are in doubt, whether we are dead or alive, he must make sure that we, the people of Bouare area council, we are doing well and that is why he has made all his activities to come here. Sir, we did not take it for granted, we are grateful. Permit me to give a brief narration of the most recent challenges and attack the council has experienced. We have so many of them, but to God be the glory. Like I said earlier, say most of the experience we have had, at times the media took close stand of what had happened at times, but narratively all, in summary, we have the few for the benefit of our Honorable Minister, Federal Capital Territory. On 25th of December 2023 kidnapping kidnappers violently attacked the peaceful agrarian community of Toklo seriously injuring seriously injuring a number of residents and abducting some of the villagers. This was followed by another attack on the border community of Kuduro where two people were killed and the kidnappers also abducted some residents. Before the end of December 2023 kidnappers also invaded Zuma village, the suburb of Bouare town, killing two persons and abducting some others. Sadly again, within the first few days of the new year kidnappers attacked Dusesa Bouare, a community along Bouare expressway, a number of people were also abducted during this attack. This sad incident. This sad incident was closely followed by another attack on Pada Bouare village, where kidnappers abducted some villagers and the district head of the village. And most recently kidnappers launched another malicious attack on Kaou village, during which they injured a number of persons and kidnapped some people. These are the sad and sorrowful experiences we have experienced, we have been passing through in this last one month despite the enormity of these calamities. The council has refused to be overwhelmed and defeated. As a government, we have taken a number of measures within the authority and our various resources to confront the challenges including the following. We organized series of security meetings with the security agencies within the council as well as mobilizing and supporting them with logistics to enhance their work in making the evil under control. We have also organized series of security meetings with the traditional rulers, religious leaders in view of this, want just to have the answer or to have control of this boundary. Mobilizing, we have also mobilized 50 hunters, 50 numbers of vigilantes into a joint security task force and supporting them with logistics to complement the effort of the security agencies in the council. This has helped in the patrolling and securing of interior areas and other vulnerable settlements. We would like to especially appreciate the Federal Capital Territory Administration under the under the able leadership of the Honorable Minister as well as the security agencies and other command level for their on-tiring and on-wavering efforts, support and commitment to the council in confronting these challenges. At this show, I consider it highly pertinent to stress that the sheer seas and the difficult terrain of the council has made the security challenges even more material and daunting. For instance, the council is made up of 16 districts and over 90 villages and hamlets in each of these districts. All these they require at least a vehicle and a minimum of seven motorcycles for effective and efficient patrol and surveillance and surveillance. And regarding to this boundary, the council has only been able to provide two vehicles and about 10 motorcycles for these operations. Therefore, we wish to make a passionate appeal to our father, the Honorable Minister of Federal Capital Territory, to support us in this struggle. One, the provision of needed logistics to security agencies in tackling their security challenges, including the vehicles, motorcycles and Uglas security challenges, including, sorry, framing of the vehicles, which of course that has not been a problem to us, we are enjoying it. Majorly, we need a support, even if it is one, we will say to God we are grateful from the Honorable Minister of Federal Capital Territory. Our esteemed leaders of Federal Capital Territory FCT, which are each one of the leaders we are, that is the Honorable Minister of Federal Capital Territory and Minister of State, for this service they have rendered to the people of Bouare area council today. And we would like to assure you of our best in ensuring the safety of lives and property of the residents. We have no doubt the fact that good safety of lives and property, we have no doubt that the fact that good and wise trial over evil and that and that in no distant time, banditry, kidnapping and other terrorist activities in the council, FCT and the nation at large will be completely eliminated and so shall it be by the grace of God Almighty. Thank you, the Honorable Minister, for this gesture you have given to us, we are grateful. May the Lord bless you.
Because what I will show today, I will show you what is going on in Bouare area council. Because somehow the people in that could be hearing about this thing openly like a easily call from Paul, just again. Actually, I have been having some meetings and seeing how to handle this situation and I know God will be helping us and God will still be helping us. And I believe I can call everything I come back and say. Honorable Minister, brother before was there in speaking in my class in FCT and I would please my sister to my pain, Barack, if I can call him. I could come in my charity, you are doing well. The security and the security, the people of Bouare are always sleeping. He should call me over, as you body, as you body, and if there's anything, I'll call you too. And the military also have been trying. So the only thing that we need our honorees have to do for them is to give them more support. To give them more support. You know, all these people that are kidnapping are people, the type of guns that they are holding, our police, they are such type of gun. The hunters, the militaries, they also support. They are the very better one. And I hope you will not be worried about them, we need to know that we, the traditional rulers, we are on our support, we need to give them support, they will come. We will hear anything, we will let you know. Because all this thing that happening is true information, true information and God will see us through. Honorable Chairman, we are here to work because what he did to us, he actually passionate us and God will honor that too. Thank you very much. I want to appreciate the FCT Minister. That is here today with us to sympathize with us and to condone with us. I want to say thank you, sir. Security challenge, it has been a serious problem in Bouare area council. But I believe with God, Insha Allah, things will be okay by the grace of God. Bouare area council is the closest area council to the city. Bouare area council, we are having three boundaries of state. Niger state and Kaduna state and Nasserawa state. Because of the inflow of human in Bouare area council, that's why we are receiving a lot of challenge. The security agencies are doing their best. We appreciate their effort, we continue to pray for them and now guide them. I'm appealing to the Honorable Minister. People from the rural area somewhere like Igbo Ushere Kaou, I'm appealing, Honorable Minister. I've tendered my request of appealing since 2019 and 2020 that we are requesting for many barak along that Shere Kaou Igbo Agin. I believe with you. Insha Allah, something will be done by the grace of God. Bouare area council, we are receiving inflow of people from neighboring states and still appealing and still appealing to the Honorable Minister that we need area command in Bouare so that it could help us in terms of security aspect. I want to appreciate my effort to the Honorable Minister of you taking your time to be here with us to condone with us. I want to say thank you, sir. As you are going, may Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, take you home safely. The traditional institution, we are doing our best to make sure that within this 16 district we have in Bouare area council, let's select the good ones that will be among the vigilantes and the hunters because the security police cannot be everywhere. So that is the effort of the traditional institution in Bouare area council. The chairman of Bouare area council is doing his best. He has given us two cars, his own support to the vigilantes and hunters. What I appreciate to chairman, God will do to you. The Honorable Minister, I want to say thank you, thank you, may Allah take you back home safely. Assalamualaikum Warahmatullahi Ta'ala Wabarakatuh. My dear good people of Bouare, gentlemen of the press, ladies and gentlemen. Let me thank the chairman of Bouare area council for making it possible for us to gather here this morning, to interface and interact with him. What affects Bouare affects the entire FCT, affects Nigeria. I bring you greetings from Mr. President who insisted that I must be here this morning and I prove that as I speak to you now, the third really council meeting is taking place. But Mr. President insisted I must be here today to talk with you, to reassure you that we will not abandon you. Security is one of the key priorities of Mr. President's administration. Yesterday, Mr. President summoned high level security meeting, which includes all the service chiefs, the ministers of defense and my humble servant. Because of recent attacks, particularly in Bouare. And social security is one of the key priorities that Mr. President is leaving with agenda. We want to face squarely. It is not going to go into business as usual. Everything has to be done to protect life and property. Without protection of life and property, then we have no business to be in government. My coming here today is I assure you that we are very, very serious. We are very, very serious. All those criminals, bandits, enough is enough. We will do everything within our powers to make sure that we will not allow this to happen again. And that is why just this morning, Mr. President have given me an approval to provide every logistics required to the security agencies. And just like what the issue bar said and the second bar said, it is not by mere talking, we are serious. Security agencies will not have any reason to say that they are not equipped. We provide everything required. I know how big Bouare is. I know that you have boundaries with three states. Niger state, Kaduna state and Nasserawa state. I know because these bandits were choosing way from the northeast. So they are making their way down. Would make it hot for them. All who require from you is their support. Everybody has a role to play. Information is key. Yesterday, when we had our security meeting, FCT security meeting, all the area council chairman were there. We agreed on certain things. I'm sure that the security agencies would have started. We encourage the vigilante, we encourage the hunters. We also got to encourage the chairman by giving him support. He has asked for some vehicles, we will give you support. Without information, there is nothing we can do. And that is where you have to play key role. Traditional institution, you have a role to play. Community leaders, you have a role to play. Because by information, you help the security agencies to go actively, take control before anything will happen. And so in next few days, you will see the action of the security agencies to make sure that this kidnapping is brought to a halt. So I condone with you, I sympathize with you for the death of some of our people, for the kidnapping of some of our people. As I speak to you here, you never can tell, some of the information may be here. I don't care whom you are, I don't care whom you are. I'm the Minister of FCT. Those who know my track, they cannot know. You will sleep again. In fact, you will not sleep again. I do it in time to do the details of what the security agencies are told to do. That is left for us. But just assure you that you are not alone. I don't want to send the chairman to go and tell you, no. I say I want to see you face to face. So you also know that we are also serious. Crime will not solve the problem. Weeping will not solve the problem. What will solve the problem is their support to the security agencies. We take this message not only to Bouare here, to all other area councils. From time to time, we will come and interacting with you and know what their peculiar problems are. We not just sit in the city. We have to come and interfere with you. So we go back and know that we have had from you. These are peculiar problems, these are details you want government to do for you. I'm sure that this is the first time FCT administration is coming directly to the area councils to interfere with you. It's unfortunate that this is happening when we have a bad incident, we shouldn't be. So this period is not only a period where police will say they don't have vehicles. We are providing vehicles. Everything the soldiers want, we provide and give to them. So that is why I came, to tell you, Mr. President have given a marching order to make sure this does not happen again. He was very, very bitter. Mr. President was very, very bitter. He was unhappy. And directed all the service chiefs and with the ministers of FCT and defense to walk with the service chiefs to make sure peace returns to Bouare and other area councils where we have several problems. So I thank you for listening to us. I'm here to hear more from you because it is you that will tell us which areas we should look into because it is your area. You know your place better than me, is not? So we listen to you. This is not going to be a period of bureaucracy, no bureaucracy. This is issue of security. I will give you security because that is one of the way up, our term, Mr. President. So feel free, do not panic, do not panic. Everything has been done. Our security agencies, they have what it takes. They are very experienced. They have the capacity to chase these criminals away. They made it hot for them in the northeast, that's why they are running. It will be hotter for them here. So I thank you very much, God who could do to bless you, God who could not to protect you. We are doing everything to see that those who are kidnapped are being released. But one appeal to you, I let the public know this. But what appear to you, and let the public know this. Yes, we know it's painful. But we cannot be encouraging kidnappers. We have to stop this idea of going to radio to say we are ready to raise money. When you do that, these criminals are happy. Right? They are happy, oh, people are conspired, people want to raise money. No. I know it is painful that their wife, their children, their husband is being kidnapped. All we want is to stop it, not to encourage it. Donors should also help us. We need the support of everybody. They cannot feel sorry. Also, we encourage them. They live, Mr. President. So we are begging you, stop this going to make announcements directly to contribute money. By doing that, you are encouraging them. So I beg you, it's part of the things I want to appeal to all of us. Not to encourage, I know how you feel, I agree. But by doing that, you are not helping us. You are only helping. To begin to make demands that they need one million, they need two hundred. Why would I go and give a criminal one hundred million? If I give one hundred million, will you not kidnap tomorrow? Then we will take the two hundred million. No. I know it's painful, nobody will want it. But we can't stop it by telling them that we are going to raise money. There is no money to be raised anywhere. We will find them to release our people. We will find them to chase them out. No space for them. So everybody have a role to play. Nigeria belongs to all of us. Abuja belongs to all of us. Like somebody said, Boari is one of the closest to the city. If we allow them to enter Boari, then we will allow them to enter the city. Would that be good for us? So no government will fool around to allow this. Will not allow it. Thank you, and God bless you. The honorable Minister has said it, and I will read it again. In one piece. While the Minister takes his leave.